Would all rise. Place the flag. Repeat after me, you're with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, you guys saw the meeting minutes from February 5th. Any questions or comments or changes? Not to take motion approved.
Motion to approve and suspend reading.
Motion by Wolf. Second by Serra, discussion. All in favor of approving the minutes from February 5th, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Thank you. Approval of the agenda. Mr. Link on here under 5B. Are you guys on the agenda?
Uh, yeah, under 5A.
Oh, you're there, okay, thank you.
Take a motion, we approve the agenda as presented.
Alright, we have a motion to approve the agenda, the pillar.
Second.
Second, by Wolf, discussion. All in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, stand sign. Thank you. Okay, let's move to 5A, 2018 Street Project. Mark, you have any updates or?
Um, not really any updates, I provided the city with some information regarding the bids. You should have that in your packets, and of course, depending on what alternates the city decides to go with is gonna decide a little bit, so. That's basically where we're at.
Okay. Speaking of alternates, alternate six will be removed from the, from the project, Elbow Woods Drive, the residents on that street voted in a close vote to, I think it was 22 to 16, Monty, voted to not have that project done. Which is their, their decision, so. For you guys' information, okay? And like Mark said, the other, we're still waiting on items such as the school, I did talk to Mr. Miller, and they are, they're gonna have a special meeting on Monday or Tuesday of next week to approve some administration hires, and they're gonna have this on the agenda. Verbally, they talked about their last meeting, and he feels like that's something they're gonna go forward with, but they have not taken any action yet. Monty and I will be meeting this week with park board representatives too. I'm not sure if it's Winter Sports people too, but we're gonna have to hear from them to make, determine what's gonna happen. Any other thoughts or questions from you guys? I will, just, you guys, Knife River came tonight to Mayo, hopefully expecting an award for the evening. Sorry, Drew, hoping you didn't come from Cavalier tonight. You, you did, okay. Well, sorry, that's something we can't do this evening yet. Any, anything for you two, Knife River?
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to. My name's Cody Bennett, I'm construction operation manager for, for Knife River. We presented the engineer with some information, we distributed some for your review as well. I think, you know, everybody here at Hazen, the engineer, and Mayo, we all kinda know, you know, depending on what options are chosen, you know, what will be the apparent little bid, so. We just wanna be here, and, and so we get introduced ourselves. You know, if you have any questions, feel free to, you know, contact us or communicate that to the engineer. You know, we have a lot of references we put together for you. Any of them are available for contact as well, as well as ourselves. One of the things that we've been really striving for the last couple of years, I've worked with Knife Rivers this almost three years, and is, you know, creating good team atmospheres and partners with our, with our clients. That's something we've really been focusing on, is kinda evidenced in some of the information that we have, that we have given you. You know, and we, that's what we really focus on, because we wanna create relationships with clients, municipal and private alike, that we can have longstanding work with and create a mutually beneficial, you know, contracts and as well as work with them, so we can, we can serve them with the needs that they, that they have. So, I know you're not making it on work tonight, but obviously, we're here to represent that we would like your work and interview. If there's anything that you have, any, any questions regarding, we'd be happy to answer them now or anytime.
Okay. Guys, I do have one question for you on the line, I'm, I'm here, and maybe you didn't work on the spec or the bid, or I know you've been working here for opening that day, but on your base bid for the salvage base course, the bid unit price, you gave fourteen dollars and twenty-five cents on for that?
Okay.
Okay, then. On, this is alternate number four. The salvage base course, the same product, you gave a bid unit price of three hundred and eighty-four seventy-seven. Do you, do you know what happened there, is that a?
I absolutely know what happened.
Okay.
Yeah, there was a magnitude of ten error in the material in, in that option, in the estimate. So it was error on, it was a error on part part, so magnitude of ten high.
The cost was based on eight hundred and fifty yards material or whatever, eighty-five yards material.
Okay. Sure you got that written down. Thank you. You, anybody else have any questions for, for Knife River? Mayo Construction, I'll let, you guys have the same, same pitch?
Yeah, well, I'm Charlie Richardson, Vice President of Mayo Construction, and I appreciate you all tonight to be on your job, and hoping we're gonna get some results tonight, because we're bidding on all the work just as they are, everybody's trying to move forward. I don't know what your plans are, hopefully we can get a feel from you on when you're thinking you'll make a decision. There's a lot of work to be done to get ready and get going on this thing. Didn't, didn't really come here to give us a sales pitch, I, I think our reputation speaks for itself. We've been around for ninety years in North Dakota, and we gave you some references on other clients we've worked with recently. I would encourage you to visit with them, if, if your decision's gonna be based on who can do the work and who isn't, I mean, it really should be based on the final outcome of the numbers. You know, I think we all know that the concrete sidewalk is roughly gonna be about forty-five thousand dollars more than the asphalt, which, there's enough money there to pave that bike path twice, you know, make it twice as thick, so. I'm not sure what your thoughts are, and we're certainly open to discuss it, look at it. Everything's there, I guess we're kinda open, you're gonna make a decision tonight or where you're at, but.
Yeah, unfortunately, guys, I'm sorry that we're not. I wish we could've been communicated somehow, but this.
That's alright.
Appreciate, truly appreciate you being here, and I have made a couple of phone calls to both, for both, of both you guys, first side, did talk to Killdeer, and I also talked to Crosby, actually, the Crosby guy was, is also the mayor in Crosby, and high regards for both companies, so thank you for bidding and being here, so.
If there's anything else we can help you with, or the engineer, or whatever, the other, any questions or anything you have, we're certainly open to that. When do you, what do you think is the timeline on making a decision, or what are your thoughts on that?
Well, unfortunately, our next meeting is March 5th, so.
So you're just tabling until that happens?
Yeah.
Is there some more information?
And if we do, if we do get some hard firm yeses or nos before that, that doesn't mean we can't have, call a special meeting and get an ask, we, we wanna get that to you as soon as possible too. We don't wanna wait any longer, that's why we got kids out, we, when we did, knew that's important for your timelines too, so. Soon as we hear from everybody, we need to.
An alternate six is out for sure.
Correct, for sure.
So like another nine thousand dollar swing or something like that, so.
Yeah.
As far as the low, low dollars, so.
Yeah.
But we're certainly available if you wanna follow or have any questions.
Okay, thanks. You guys are sure welcome to stay or start heading back home a few months, so. Yeah, thanks, guys, at this time, we'll move to 5, 5B, Peace Lutheran Church property. And Mr. Link is here. Ken, why don't you roll up the chair and come and have a seat and visit with us? Ken, Ken and I visited the other day, I've talked to Ricky Scheid the other day also, and Ricky is the outgoing president of the board, correct?
Well, no, they selected him to continue.
He got lucky to get that back, didn't he?
Yes, exactly that.
You know how they're gonna stay after that. Ken's the president of our church council.
Oh, yeah, well, congratulations. That comes once a year.
We know, so anyhow, I talked to Ken and all the discussion we're having, just trying to get this ironed out the correct way. Kenny, what do you, do you have more information for us, or what's?
Well, first, I've had some questions asked of me from Bob Johnson and Rick Scheid, and I didn't quite really know what was being said. How about I ask you, what are you folks asking of Peace Lutheran Church, so I get on the right track?
We are asking for an easement of that property, so we can have that road work done, and at some point in the future, that we know that it's never, you know, it's not gonna be, you know, a hindrance when it comes to that road, roadway in that area.
On the east side of the church?
Yeah, on the east side, yes.
I think we would ask. Okay, well, how about then, I tried to give you some history, and I've been working with that property since about eighty-four, I haven't researched anything new since about four years ago. On here, what if you pass that to Monty?
You bet.
Under church property, there's some PDF files, and this'll, it, it may help to explain some of this.
Cause you, you, you know the project we're doing this summer involves.
Some sewer line work, I understand.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
To what extent, I don't know, but.
And finding the curb, no one knows where the curb stop is either, for your church.
Oh, I, I know where that curb stop is.
Well, Ricky, Ricky and Bob don't, and that's the, and I don't think Dick does either, in the current. I think Dick, Dick, Dick and the water, both don't.
Which one do you wanna start with?
Let's start, can you slide that over so I can see that? No, can you grab right here and slide? Right there, there we go. Okay, let's grab, it'd be a PDF file, and so. These are all PDFs, let's grab this one right here. It would be the Danusars First Edition, City of Hazen, and easements.
Danusars First Edition.
Seriously, you guys, you don't, if you don't want, don't feel like you're being rude, I'm leaving.
Yeah, let's see. And it's a PDF.
This is an old computer, Ken.
Okay, wow. We have to enlarge that, and I don't, where's your scale to? Okay, then we have to slide, yeah, okay, enlarge some more. Maybe you can do it a little bit more enlarged, and then. Okay, let's just slide over a little bit, there, that'll be good. Well, it's kind of strange, but the magenta color right up there, what the world, this doesn't shine on that screen, yeah, that magenta color, that was the first deed to the church, and that was like nineteen fifty. Well, it's strange, cause the church building was started construction in forty-eight and finished sometime in fifty. And that's, is a hundred feet east and west by, I think it's two hundred and eighty-eight, yeah, two eighty-eight point three north and south. Now, that is not, that was a meets and bounds from the section corner over by the funeral hall, okay? Now, the next property.
By the funeral hall.
Right up on.
Oh, the existing Warburg one.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and now if we go over to the, this green in here, that was a deed to the city of the west hundred and sixty feet of lot three of Danusars, so that sits there. Then in seventy-four, there was a deed, came from the funeral hall, from the section corner, on down, around this little blue square here, and on, over, next to, but there's a problem there, but not on or the same line as the east hundred and sixty feet with the city and back up and over. Now, in this area, the section line right away was never deeded. Here it was.
Ken, outline the church.
The church sits right here.
Okay.
The building and the parsonage sits in here. Okay, now, you're concerned about this street on the east side. Now, if you see on your file there, Danusars Block Fifty-Five, was maybe up towards, well, that, that's fine, that one would work too. Okay, in nineteen seventy-four also, the owners of this property right here subdivided that. And that's called Danusars Block Fifty-Five subdivision. And they, their subdivision started at the section corner and came over the same fourteen hundred and fifteen point five feet, on down and around and back up, and closed it out, and they had lots one, two, three, and four. In that subdivision, there was this asphalt blacktop street, which, they use the word donate, they donated that to the city, to the public. That is a public street.
Really?
Yes.
Do you, is there paperwork that's?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, really?
And it's on there, here, here's the subdivision, and here's the signatures, and the, they donated it to the city, now.
The same thing as, claimed deed?
Well, that, that's a conveyance, when it's recorded, both the owners and the city acknowledged it. And right here it goes, blacktop access road, public way. And that was right in this here. Now, for some reason, remember, I pointed out that little blue square down here, that's seventeen point seven by thirty-one and a half? In seventy-four, that was conveyed to the city, from Peace Lutheran Church. Why that was included in the deed in seventy-four, I, I don't know, I have no idea. And of course, this what says street here was only a forty-five foot wide street on the Danusars Edition, but in nineteen fifty-two, there's a deed that widens that Central Avenue also. There is one little catch in here that right in this area, I can't, I haven't been able to track down who owns this. Just west of this little thirty-five by seven, or thirty-one by seventeen, and north of the end of the street, because that was, that's three, four, five, the street stopped at the north end of lot five. And so from five up to the church property, I don't know who owns that.
So is that on the incline?
That is on the incline.
So someone would build a house there.
Well, someone owns that house.
The doghouse, yeah.
So someone owns it.
Oh, interesting, so.
And there is a gap between the deed of Peace Lutheran Church in seventy-four and the church property, or the city property, where the old swimming pool used to be, where the senior citizens has now. Up at the section line is like four feet, and down at the end of the lot, it's five something. Is that what it looks like down there? And that's such a mess back in there, that I don't know who's occupying it, but, you know.
So whose land is the parking lot and everything, that's, that's city property?
Which parking lot?
Of the senior center?
That city property, city property, yeah.
All the way to the back of that lot, on the south side of the building too?
Yes. Yeah, I'm pretty close to where those people are occupying, some, someplace in there. I'm not saying that they're occupying their own land, or they're occupying all of their own land. I'm not saying that.
So the west side is still another church.
That is right. Now, there was another item that Monty, that file, there's an interesting, it was a nineteen seventy-three survey, you may have to go download this one? Yeah, that one. Now, I don't know what the purpose of this was, but we see that what's labeled D is where the church building sits, F, and if we can scroll up a little bit, it says road easement. Well, I have never found a road easement for that, if that was proposed or not.
On the west side.
On the west side, and A was where the parsonage sits. And I don't know where that deed is, but it says down there G, option. And I can't find on that drawing where the land G is. And here's this little thirty-one and a half, but seventeen is here. I don't know what this fifteen point three represented. And this, I remember running across the description for this little parcel E in here, which had a typo in it. But you just, I don't know what that was, because here is the two eighty-eight point three, this line right here. And then here would be, this says curb, and this would be the dedicated roadway. Then again, like I say, in seventy-four, there's a deed from the church to the city, where this little piece was deeded to the city, where you can go down onto the pavement. I don't know who owns that, that's the piece I don't know.
So then we don't need an easement from the church, where, the, the road belongs to us, property belongs to us.
That on the east side.
On the east side, yeah.
Well, on the west side, there's sewer line easements in there. Wait till Monty catches up, go, go ahead. Can you flip back to maybe that one that said easements? Yeah, there we go. And then I, I have a drawing, there's sewer line easement that comes up by this seventh street, down here, and comes all the way across over here to the manhole, right in front of the church. And then there's sewer line easement that comes up here, and over here to the manhole that sits here, so this easement and this easement join in that area. Now, you wondered where your water shut-off is?
Yeah.
Uh, can you, can we slide that up, Monty, by the way?
Both as far as it goes.
Oh, it's down by the fire hydrant. What is that street?
Central.
On Central Avenue and. There's the church. What's this here?
That's Central.
Yeah, but this one.
Oh, that's fifth, that's fifth.
It's by the hydrant.
That's where your shut-off is?
That runs, that shut-off shuts this water line off that runs up to here, and there's the hydrant, and then from the hydrant, it runs up here, fed these two homes that the Guttnicks lived in, that the church bought, and they're gone now. And then, according to what I know, it feeds that Mrs. Smith's house.
So there's no curb stop here?
No, no, there was curb stop.
So if we wanna shut off the church, we gotta shut up the whole block.
Well, the church, this, I think, feeds this, the church now has fed from the west side over here. I'm not a hundred percent sure. But that's where that, that's where that gate valve is, or that curb stop.
Talk to Dick tomorrow.
Cause that is not the same line as what runs to the fire hydrant.
Okay, then if we have easements, if we have super easements on the west side and, and the east side is ours, I guess we're, we're in good shape.
Yeah, even that piece of property that I don't know who owns it, like I talked about, that sewer line easement runs across that, in that area, so, I mean, Peace Lutheran gave the easement, but maybe didn't have the right to do it, because they didn't own it.
Alright, well, good.
That's all that I.
So last I talked to Ricky, he still wanted a city representative to come to your next board meeting. Is that still necessary, you think, or?
Well, I guess that's up to you folks, right? Cause, go ahead.
Ask about that F, sorry, you're recognizing that as a deed?
No, no, I'm not, because all the documents I have ever found, there has not, I have not come across an easement granted for that parcel F.
Your F, okay.
Not a road easement, but a sewer line easement, yes.
Yes, nineteen eighty-six, if you wanna look at that jump drive, you'll see a nice drawing. There should be sewer line of nineteen eighty-six. There, right there, right there.
Is part of the project, approved, on the west side?
No, it's just, just the east side.
Now, I guess the only way you could really, I don't know if there's a curb stop off Seventh Street going to Mrs. Smith's house or not, it, you know, that would seem logical, cause that's, that's a newer water line.
Right, yeah.
Go turn the one off down by the hydrant, see what you say. Don't say that I said that.
You're saying recorded.
Well, thanks, Kenny, we appreciate that. Helped tremendously. Cause I was losing sleep on you.
Of what?
Yeah, yeah, it's nice to have that.
The problem that I'm running into is I have to run over to Stanton all the time, because the county's Enron system doesn't go back that far. I, I, is it back, I don't even know if it's back into the nineties.
Yeah, unless it's a deal, if you look at the documents.
Oh, yeah, so, and I remember that little triangle piece, I remember running across that description, and the reason I remember this, because it was. The reason I remember this because it was, I don't know if I saw it abstract or where, but there's a typo in it and it, the typo was repeated like maybe three times.
Thank you, Ken, I appreciate that.
So when you come by our home on our street there, of course, no one on our street is going to petition out that street improvement, but we're just looking for a low price.
Ken, I knew that without you saying it.
Now, you know, I, I don't look around contracts before and a lot of times low prices. Good luck to you all, thank you.
Thank you. Six A local raffle permit hidden for your skating club. They're doing cash and gift cards. Motion to approve by Wolf. Segment color discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, thank you. All right, that takes us down to reports. I'll just touch briefly on last Monday and Tuesday at the governor's Main Street Initiative Conference in Bismarck. It was fantastic. I, I, it was six, seven hundred people there in the event center. It's interesting to see a governor that doesn't run things as. He runs it different and I, I really liked the way he, it's not like they gave a big pot of money for everybody to dig into, and that's what everybody's there. But making things more transparent with the, with DOT and the health department and BMD. They all had outbreak sessions there we were at and they, you know, they all just talked about being more accessible and easier to visit with and how to find, find help and information for those people. There's some great speakers from around the country talking about main streets and how to make our communities continue to be viable and, and actually profit centers, more like a business and government, but, uh, you know, how to keep people moving in our community versus others when there's, when there's competition. So a lot of, a lot of great ideas and some things that we can initiate on our own and make you think out of the, kind of out of the box a little bit, but. So no, there was no free money, but a lot of great ideas and I answered that hire, was there, me and so was Buster. And, um, boy, it was, it really charged your batteries and made you excited about our community. And I did hear from other people that were there and they talked about Hazen and mentioned it and, you know, how it seems like we're going in the right direction here and how a couple other smaller towns are trying to model themselves a little bit with, you know, they're, they're shocked that we're going to buy this project down ten percent with sales tax money. Some communities never considered doing that, but they don't have sales tax money and they're coppers, you know. But the fact that we have saved and can do something like that, some mayors and council people there that were very impressed with that. Anyhow, I'll, I'll, throughout the next couple of meetings, I'll bring out some more information, but from that meeting, one, just one small thing is, uh, I've heard complaints and concerns about our power lines going down Main Street. We have these ugly power poles and we got overhead hanging, you know, and I, I've been brutally honest with people. No, we're not, we can't get rid of them. They're too, it's too expensive. There's no project or pots of money out there to change that. Uh, we're not moving it underground, we're not moving in the alleys, but what we can do is we can make those damn poles look better. You know, there's things we can do to enhance that. And the small things like that that are going to, that people look at when they drive down Main Streets to see if this is, you know, let's drive down Main Street to Hazen, let's drive down Main Street to Beulah, is there something we like here or there, you know? It's small things like that that we need to consider. It's not, not just a multimillion dollar street project. It's little things that are to enhance that make the community better, so. Anyhow, I'll, I'll talk about that more at other meetings, so I'm glad I went to that. Casey?
Oh.
Okay, yeah.
Uh, just a reminder, our, we, our fire people are going up to Minna this weekend for fire training. They're going to be taking their new vehicle up there to display it, show it off to the other communities.
Nancy?
Um, no, other than going to, I'll be going to the ambulance board meeting on Monday night.
Speaking of meetings, Monty and I'll be going over to Stanton on Wednesday morning.
Yeah, eleven.
Uh, to visit with them about the election, uh, poll locations. Okay, and Buster's not here. That brings us down to eleven eight, old business election agreement with Mercer County. Monty, you want to?
Basically just the fact that we're on your agenda to be with the commission. Hoping to get some new numbers as far as their cost, because they were anticipating us doing just our election using the electronic tabulating ballots where I didn't form that, that we were looking at actually having the ballots that anybody can vote here within the county. That we want to make Hazen a vote center for anybody, so.
Cause if we do it on our own, it's going to cost us more ourselves.
So we'll see if they've got some different information for us or not.
I would just like to commend Monty, I think he makes great questions to them. Unfortunately, they didn't answer them. Maybe they'll have a meeting on, on Wednesday. But the main thing is, you know, we're not trying to steal anything from the county. We're trying to preserve a right to simply have an option to select a polling place. And I don't know why it's, it almost seems like it's a scenario like they're kind of against us. We've been retaining our right to select, but I, I'm sure that, you know, it'll all work itself out. It doesn't have to be exercised, so they, you know, if the costs are too high, I don't know what they would be, but they. Once they get it boiled down to the specifics. I just want to thank Monty for his.
Absolutely.
Good questions.
Yep, me too. Okay, um, down to twelve, a drug and alcohol policy update.
As I wrote in the notice we've gone, the legal cities has gone, but a new vendor for the consortium. And we are a part of the consortium, keeps our costs down when we zip and they do their end draws and all that stuff. So the policy does have to be updated to include Global Safety Network and their medical review officers and those types of things and to include those opioids and.
So other than those amendments, the, the policy is pretty much everything that we had in there.
Everything stays the same other policies.
Could I ask a question? Does, does this apply to the, are the volunteer fire people included in that?
No, they are not.
In this?
No, they are not.
Okay, and if law enforcement is called off, called out after hours, oh, they are, are subject to this same?
Yeah.
Policy?
Yeah.
We need, we need to make sure that they're fully educated on that. Cause I was, I'm not going to say surprised to see, but you know, in reading it, it specifies how many hours before they would report to duty that they are to be abstaining from any kind of alcohol intake and stuff like that and to understand the limits and their susceptibility to be, to be tested and everything like that, so. It's, it's good information to, to be aware of if they, if they haven't reviewed it anytime.
Actually, there will be a meeting with all the staff coming up within the next month to go over the new policies and update all the workforce safety and all of those informations too.
How about, how about the, the paid positions within our fire department? Is that, is that different than?
The unpaid positions in the.
Okay.
They just get vehicles tightened. Well, that's right.
Emergency coordinator for Hazen. Shams, is she the one who needs a new replacement for Steve?
Yeah.
So she'd be such.
All of our, all of our paid employees are such.
So we don't, are we on a reading for that then, Monty?
No, this, you can, if you're comfortable with it, you can approve it tonight.
Okay.
And up the new boards.
Okay, thank you. All the board like to proceed.
I'll make a motion, Elliot, accept the, the policy with the understanding that it's being promoted then to the city employees.
All right, we have a motion by Pillar. Second by Stern, discussion. Roll call.
Pillar.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Whoa.
Aye.
Over and over.
Aye.
Motion carried. Approve of the bills.
I wasn't here today, so there aren't any new ones.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion by Wolf to approve the bills. And second by Stern, discussion. And roll call.
Whoa.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Pillar.
Aye.
Over and over.
Aye.
Motion carried. Meeting adjourned, thank you very much.